Thank you. Let's hope we get Ms. Ankuma shortly, but in the meantime, Mr. Kimball, would you call the roll, please?
With pleasure, sir. Mr. Castillo?
Here.
Ms. Carney. Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
Mr. Sharp.
Here.
Ms. Ward.
Yeah.
And Mr. Webb. Great, thank you.
All right. Would you please join me, well, okay, yes, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Let me silence my noisy cellphone. All right, let's go now to public comments. I have a speaker slip here, Sajila Ramsey. Please come in.
Good evening, school board members. I have lived in this city for just two years, and I have paid a lot of attention during that time to the administration in this city, and specifically the managerial end of things. And as I learn more and more about our governance officials and how decisions are being made and budgets being passed and so on, I have just really, in a nutshell, this to say. I think that it is pearl-grabbingly shocking, the way that monies are being mismanaged in this city on a regular basis. And I'm going to get to the bottom of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our lineup of speakers is Ms. Allison Kuchma.
Good afternoon, good evening. Allison Kuchma, 813 Fulton. I have so many concerns that I want to share with you. I don't really know where to start. I'm very concerned about the budget process, that the premise for a huge chunk of money was teachers departing for Arlington based on pay raises, and that was presented to the board and the community as a real issue. And the data that I asked for, and this was supposedly the data, and that is very disconcerting. Kind of makes people talk about it as an embellishment. There's other words for it that the community is using, and I'm gravely concerned. It's embarrassing, quite frankly. Another issue, the ESOL situation. I mean, I don't even know where to start with that. The chairs of the ESOL committee stood here and reported data to everybody in February, and we find out later, after it's talked about a lot in the community, that the numbers on the VDOE website were wrong. Well, the numbers that I was quoting online were the numbers on the website. So I don't provide the ESOL numbers to the state, so that would be why I was misquoting, if I misquoted data. But I'm really confused why no one from the other side would have stopped those two chairs of the ESOL committee and said, "Wait, wait, stop. What numbers are you quoting? Because if they were wrong, why didn't someone stop them? And when was their communication with the chairs that the data on the website was wrong? And when did you get an email saying about what they reported was wrong?" I mean, it just doesn't, it doesn't add up. And then we're told that the numbers at George Mason High School are too small to report. They have 22 students and 18 on monitor, and at Mary Ellen Henderson, they have something like 10 students and eight students on monitor status, but the MEH numbers are reported to the state, but at George Mason High School in English, they're too small to report. Well, doesn't that seem, doesn't that seem strange to anyone? It just, there's just so much that doesn't add up. And we have this, this fund balance that, that you guys can just pull money from, but you don't tell us how much is there, so we don't get to weigh in on how much, you know, you could leave there, or, you know, there's no point in the process where we're involved in, and you say you don't have money for ESOL teachers, but there's some large programs that I've gone up to members of this, of the board and said, you know, face-to-face, "How much does the middle-years program cost us?" And you guys don't know. So that means that no one is telling you how much that program costs. So how can you make a decision that it costs, that money could be moved from that program to something else if you don't even know how much we're spending there? I mean, I don't really understand how you make those kinds of decisions. And then in terms of special education, I mean, that's another whole, whole thing. We have a teacher that's not endorsed teaching our neediest special education students. Yes, it's an elective, so it's legal, but that wouldn't fly in the IB community. You could never have IB parents finding out that their IB kids were being taught by a teacher that's not endorsed. That would just never fly in this community. So why would you do that to the special education students? It makes absolutely no sense. I just want to read you one email that I got on a FOIA request. Would you like to hear the email?
Please proceed briefly.
Thank you. So this email is from the, from the Department Chair of Special Education, and there were students that had ILMS in their IEP. It was written into their IEP. So if it's in the IEP, it's a service that they-
Could you just go ahead and read the email?
Yes, okay. She writes, "We have some young'uns with ILMS needs on their IEP. I know we have other ways to provide support. I'm recommending to case managers to encourage use of Mustang Block and ESR to fill that need. Do you have any other suggestions? I think there are about four students directly impacted that I have heard about so far." This is the head of the department. If that doesn't tell you something, you're not listening to the right ear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kuchma. Next up is David Kuchma.
Hi, Dave Kuchma, 813 Fulton Avenue.
Welcome.
I had a, just, there was a thought when I spoke at the council meeting, and I just wanted to convey it to the, to the board, and it dealt with the, the exodus of teachers to Arlington County, and kind of going through some of the, you know, the budget work sessions and seeing some of the handouts that were given out, is that we did a pretty good job of publicizing how much less we pay our teachers than Arlington County. So I guess I would maybe, that might be something that you might want to maybe not publicize as much, or, and in fact, it could have had a contributing role into teachers actually going to Arlington County. So just something to consider, maybe, maybe a different approach might be in order in terms of retaining staff and dwelling on maybe the positive of working in our small school system. Just, just a couple of comments, I would, you know, I would like to just see, maybe, see the budget produced earlier, the line item budget. I think we can all benefit from that. There's just a lot of questions, I think, that, that could be raised, and even to the extent of, you know, looking at our budget and as we get near the end of the process, to look at how we're doing. Are, is there, you know, is there, are there any savings? Where are we headed, just to take a look at the end picture, because that can, you know, dictate what we, you know, can and will do with things. So, and just, and I kind of harped on it a little bit the last time, just that we've got, you know, we seem to have a lot of just, I don't know, assistant superintendents, to where I was kind of talking with someone about it, to where we have almost an assistant superintendent for every one of our primary schools. And we only, you know, we have the three, you know, we have the high school, the, you know, the junior high, and the middle school. So it just seems like, you know, when you add the other positions on top of all that, we've got a lot of, a lot of heavy-up folks out there. So, you know, those are my thoughts, so, you know, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Ms. Kuchma. Next up, Ira Kalin. Welcome, Mr. Kalin.
Good evening. It's a cameo appearance on my part.
That means she'll be under three minutes?
Pardon?
You'll be, you'll be one minute then, instead of three?
Actually, I'll take your, I'd like to talk to the, your next meeting with the city council and the unsolicited bid. I don't have any financial data, none of that was presented. However, from my experience in project finance, a risk of the nature that they're talking about building a high school first and then the others suggests that they're expecting a form of guarantee. Now, that guarantee, they could tell you it won't be legally binding, whatever, it's just that you're sort of on board, or in fact, there may be no guarantee. However, I can guarantee you that the same situation happened to Richmond, Virginia, a few years ago in one of their CDAs. Lawrence may remember, you were on council when we discussed this, and that was Community Development Authority. City of Richmond organized, put in some of its resources for parking, and got the private sector to borrow about, I don't know, 80, 100 million bucks. I forget exactly how much it was. The project failed, and the bondholder said that Richmond had to pay up for the private sector. And they implied that if they didn't, there would be no further market access to Richmond, and that it was a moral obligation. Even though the contract, which I read, said there was no obligation, moral or otherwise, they still came back and demanded payment, which I think it was, ended up to be at $70 million. If we run into this type of situation here, there won't be an educational system available to the younger students, because we can't bear a default of the bonds if it's in the $70 million range. So I urge you to be extremely careful about going for an unsolicited bid in this type of project. These are very sophisticated financial operations, and it's unreasonable to expect that a school board, even a city council, would have the resident expertise to work through all of this. Finally, just a little sidebar. The state of South Carolina has put in its pensions a lot of private equity, but they sort of lost control, so they hired a firm to look into what it was actually doing and how much it was actually costing the state to work with these private equity firms. After a year and a half, the independent firm still can't figure out how it's working, because it's too complicated. You don't want to get yourselves involved in anything that is other than fairly plain vanilla. And I tell you, nobody in the private sector wants to take risks if they can avoid it. They're not going to give you 100 million unless there's a protection somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalin. Next up, we have Mr. Bill Royce. Welcome, Mr. Royce.
Welcome, thank you. I don't think I've ever been before this group before, although I've written much about it. And, and we'll continue to do so, so long as you all continue to torture the truth, and you, my friend, fail to do your job to manage the, the infrastructure and the people that you're responsible for. As a starting point, I look at this. Now, I think Allison, Ms. Kuchma gave this a grade of F. I look at this, I'm astonished that someone would take my tax dollars and think it's appropriate to torture numbers to come out with something that looks okay in response to a very simple question put to them by the, the city council, okay? The whole premise that people are leaving to go to Arlington was a false premise from the get-go. It has been for years. And then to take what is the truth, which is represented somewhere in these numbers, to torture it to get to this, I'm paying for that. I don't like that. I'm a supporter of public education. I'm not a supporter of bureaucrats trying to get wealthy off of public education. Got no need for that. Got no use at all. I find it shameful that we have kids who are underserved in this city. That is an absolute point of shame to me, that, that you all would allow that to occur. It's astonishing. Now, I'm not a mean guy. I've been told I'm a mean guy, because I don't like bureaucrats that waste my money, okay? That torture numbers, that create, you know, some sort of diversion, that, that fail to take data that belongs to me, that I paid for the creation of, and hold it back and hide it and disguise it. I don't like that. I have no use for that whatsoever, because I'm interested in seeing kids get educated, okay? So I'm not a mean guy. I just don't like bureaucrats who waste my money, okay? I don't like people that torture data to hide the truth. That, that's, that's not mean, that's just being honest and open. And you'll find that I, nobody loves kids, cares more about their education than I do. So that, that's what I'm about. And what, what I see, I came here tonight to do you all a favor, the folks on the school board. And the favor is this, there is more problems in that budget that you all are getting ready to vote on. There is more stuff hidden that's mislabeled, that's disguised. You all don't have a clue. I guarantee you, I know more about the budget, the detail of it, than any one of you. We can play Budget Jeopardy. I'll beat every one of you, except for Tony and Hunter there. Hunter's job is to, is to get in there and, and that stuff. So what I'm here to tell you is, you shouldn't pass the budget, because then you take ownership for that mess, okay? And I don't think you really want to be owners of that, because what we need is an internal audit to comb through and figure out dollar in, dollar spent. What does it spend on? What should have to do with education?
Thank you, Mr. Royce.
So that's what we need, is an internal audit.
Thank you.
Go through, end to end.
Time's up.
Why is my time up?
Because you're allowed three minutes. Your minutes have elapsed.
Why am I allowed three minutes?
Those are school board policies.
Okay. What, what force do they have? I have policies that I don't, I don't abide by.
Mr. Royce, you're out of order. Could you please take your seat now?
Now, what are the, but tell me the enforcement of these policies. What, what are the enforcement of them?
Well, right now, you're disrupting the meeting of the school board.
But I can live with that. I'm just curious, what, tell me about the policies.
Mr. Royce, your three minutes have passed.
So what you're saying is you have policies that have to be abided by? Is that the, is that the deal?
Mr. Royce, I'll ask you once more.
Okay, I think you gave me my answer. Good. Okay?
Any more public comment?
No.
Seeing none, we will move on now.
I don't like seeing spurs on your face.
Ma'am, public comment is closed. Public comment is closed. You now are out of order, ma'am. We will now proceed to item three on the agenda, but before we do that, we would like to have a moment to recognize someone for a very special achievement. Dr. Jones.
This is kind of a little bit of happy. We are recognizing tonight our support employee of the year for the entire school division, Marty Goodell.
Do I have a motion?
(applause)
For the whole school division. Yay!
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board adopt the 2015-2016 school operating budget in the amount of $46,323,200, which requires a city appropriation of $38,298,700.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Mr. Kimball, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Mr. Ankuma?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Next, we have item 3.02, adoption of the 2015-2016 food services budget. Do I have a motion on this?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board adopt the 2015-2016 school food services budget with receipts and disbursements in the amount of $988,700.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Follow the roll, please, Mr. Kimball.
Certainly. Mr. Ankuma?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next, we come to item 3.05 on the agenda, adoption of the 2015-2016 group hospitalization and group life insurance benefits. Do I have a motion on this?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board adopt the benefits of the hospitalization and group life insurance for full-time eligible employees, part-time eligible employees, and retirees for the 2015-2016 school year as shown on the attachment.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. Second. Mr. Kimball.
Mr. Ankuma?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you. Now, item 3.06, approval of the 2015-2016 special education annual plan. Yes, would you please?
This is actually our annual plan that we do for the Virginia Department of Education. It's not what we would consider our work plan. It's really making that annual commitment to follow the IDEA and the regulations of IDEA. It also has the commitment that we will service children from age two to 21, you know, in an inclusive environment, for free and appropriate public education. So as you read through this, these are the criteria that we're agreeing to as a school division, and we must do this annually. And then from this, we take and create a work plan, which is shared with you every fall from special education.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Jones on this?
Just one point, this was, I was not at the Special Education Advisory Committee last month, because we had another closed session with the council, but this was debated and voted on by the Special Education Advisory Committee last month.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board approve the 2015-2016 special education annual plan as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. Kimball?
Very good. Mr. Ankuma?
Yes.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. And now we come next to Board Student Liaison comments. We have no student liaison this evening, probably understandably so because of the increasing demands of, of school. So we'll just start at my left with Ms. Ward.
So I will report on the ESOL advisory board first. We've had a couple of meetings, and we had our last meeting, the last April, mid-April approximately. It was really exciting. We have a new member, or a new member who would like to be appointed. She is not a member yet, but she is from the, the Spanish community, and she's a lovely woman, she wants to become involved. I also have another person who has stepped up, and hopefully she will get approved as well, and she's also, now, a parent of a student. The, the student liaisons to this committee are fabulous. They're great kids, they're really enthusiastic, and they really want to start some programs for the new ESOL students who arrive. As they had told us, typical ESOL students, they don't know anybody, and they don't speak the language, so they have a double, double whammy against them, so to speak. And these kids are going to brainstorm and come up with some kind of program, like a buddy program, for the new kids. And lastly, we, in an effort to reach out to the entire ESOL community, the chair, chairwomen of this committee are trying to organize an information fair, kind of afternoon, Saturday afternoon, Saturday morning thing, that's open, that will be publicized for all the ESOL families to come and obtain more information, to get to meet the people on the advisory board, and, and express any concerns they might have at that time. So I'm really excited about what this ESOL committee is doing, really moving forward, getting some good stuff done. Athletic boosters, we discussed the turf field, and since there is no definitive information about whether or not chopped-up tires cause any kind of illness, they are fine with us replacing the turf field as we have decided. And one other thing, there's been repeated break-ins in our concession stand. Fortunately, the only thing that was taken was a lot of candy, and that, that's it. The boosters are working on figuring out a new lock system for that, for that concession stand, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Ms. Ankuma.
We don't have much to add. The PTSA and GT do not meet us frequently, and so we've had, since our last meeting, we haven't had any meetings since then, but on Wednesday, I have a PTSA meeting, and I will report after that. Gifted and Talented, just as, in the next few weeks, will have another meeting to catch up for the last one in, I believe it was March. Was at the Chamber Luncheon, where a It was really exciting, we have a new member, or a new member who would like to be appointed. She is not a member yet, but she is from the Spanish community, and she's a lovely woman, she wants to become involved. I also have another person who has stepped up, and hopefully she will get approved as well, and she's also a parent of a student. The student liaisons to this committee are fabulous, they're great kids, they're really enthusiastic, and they really want to start some programs for the new ESOL students who arrive. As they had told us, typical ESOL students, they don't know anybody, and they don't speak the language, so they have a double whammy against them, so to speak, and these kids are going to brainstorm and come up with some kind of program, like a buddy program for the new kids. And lastly, we, in an effort to reach out to the entire ESOL community, the chairwomen of this committee are trying to organize an information fair, kind of afternoon, Saturday afternoon, Saturday morning thing, that's open, that will be publicized for all the ESOL families to come and obtain more information, to get to meet the people on the advisory board, and express any concerns they might have at that time. So, I'm really excited about what this ESOL committee is doing, really moving forward, getting some good stuff done. Athletic boosters, we discussed the turf field, and since there is no definitive information about whether or not chopped-up tires cause any kind of illness, they are fine with us replacing the turf field as we have decided. And one other thing, there's been repeated break-ins in our concession stand. Fortunately, the only thing that was taken was a lot of candy, and that's it. The boosters are working on figuring out a new lock system for that concession stand, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma.
We don't have much to add. The PTSA and GT do not meet as frequently, and so we've had, since our last meeting, we haven't had any meetings since then, but on Wednesday, I have a PTSA meeting, and I will report after that. Gifted and Talented, just in the next few weeks, will have another meeting to catch up for the last one in, I believe it was March, was at the Chamber Luncheon, where a speaker came in to talk about getting organized, which we all probably have to do, but that wasn't really much to do with the, didn't have much to add on the education, and then I believe we were at the Peak Meeting, Tony, last time, which is a little bit centered around the budget, but now that that's over, I guess we'll look forward to next year, so not a whole lot to add at this time for my liaison appointments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. Mr. Lawrence?
Just a few things, and some of them saved from last time when we were all too tired to talk. First of all, reminder to everybody, the gala is this Friday, so if you have not bought tickets, please do. I, well, there are tickets left, and also, if you can't make it, like I can't, you can buy tickets for teachers, who can, you know, enjoy a night out that they would not otherwise enjoy, so it'll be at the same place as before, Washington Golf, and it's a great venue and a great night, and they raise a lot of money. They donate over a quarter million every year to various school and school-related causes, so it's definitely worth it. So, this Friday, don't make me hunt you down. Secondly, on the Special Education Advisory Committee, they met last month, like I said, I missed it because of the council meeting, but I made sure to talk to Liz and Christina, who's the chair. They are moving along, you probably all saw in morning announcements, they had a survey that went out to families, and they're hoping to get some good comments, because they've gotten very involved in parental engagement, they have a Parent Engagement Subcommittee, which meets every couple of weeks, and they're getting very, very active, they now have a brochure, so that, you know, when families come in, and they have no idea what Special Education Advisory Committee does, they have the information there, they have contact information, so they're getting very energized. They'll meet tonight, which, again, I'll miss because of the closed meeting, they have a new member, so we had a vacancy in the elementary school level, we were sort of top-heavy with high school parents, and now we'll have another elementary parent, which will be good. I moderated the technology forum, I guess it was just last week, it seems a long time ago, we had a lot of parents with concerns over technology, and it seemed to go well. We had students up there, as well as a lot of teachers, saying, you know, giving their opinions and answering questions. Tony and I met with the High Point Pool Board to talk to them about trying to get parking for next year for the Mount Daniel construction, and that looks very good, they were very, very positive, and I think the best part of that was where they said, there's a point where you just need to be good neighbors, and they've helped us out before, but I think that'll be very good. And finally, just on the budget, I want to thank everybody, I want to thank the council, who, as always, it's a hard vote, I thought this year was going to be easier, this year actually seemed to be harder, even though we were, we had a request, it was about a third of what we'd had two years ago, but mostly, you know, I want to thank Tony, and Hunter, and Marty, and John, and Tom, and Rick, and Lisa, and, you know, everybody else who's not here, who just answered every single question we had, answered it quickly, answered it happily, answered it thoroughly, and I'm amazed, every year, when you're able to do this without going nuts, because it seems to get worse and worse every single year, and every time we have a question, you answer it, so thank you, you make us look good, and you really do a great service for the schools and the community, so thank you, thank you, thank you. And that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Work outside, back in. Mr. Sharp?
The Chamber held a mixer at the Thank you again. The Chamber of Commerce held their most recent mixer at Alex and Annie, which is part of the Mosaic development in Merrifield. Very, very interesting new, sort of Pandora-like establishment, but a little different than Pandora also. I think you'll enjoy it if you go by, so I want to thank the Chamber members for organizing that outing. Also, happy to attend the celebration of visionaries from our past, and look forward to those being inspirational in providing us with some visions for the future. The visionaries, of course, included the superintendents from our past, Warren Pace, from the era when the two programs that were especially being honored were beginning, that was the IB program and the daycare program, and people who were very instrumental in getting those programs off the ground, and that was Lou Olum, of course, with the IB program, but also members of the committee that began that program along with Lou, and Jamie Scharf was there as a teacher that shows how the program is continuing and continuing to serve the students. I also had the pleasure of lunch with Keith Thackeray, and Keith was relating to me the value of the IB program for his daughter Rebecca, who's about to finish a Temple University degree in just three years, with a large contribution toward that degree from the IB program. The other person who was an administrator at the time when the daycare program was beginning was Norma Lanier, and that family was also, you know, very instrumental in education, sort of throughout the community. Her husband Bill was one of the early administrators for the UVA Graduate Center, when it was located in Merrifield rather than the location that it currently occupies. Lastly, I also want to thank people for the very great effort on the budget, that was, I agree, a very difficult thing to bring through to a successful conclusion, I think in large measure because there's still anxiety over the Great Recession that we went through, and people are still concerned that we're not really all the way on the other side of it. I think there are things that may prove that we are on the other side, but some of those are still emerging, and I look forward to a more smooth budget for the next time. I hope we can begin earlier, even before my current term expires, and I know we'll be beginning the visioning process before that occurs, beginning it during the summertime, and I look forward to a collaborative process in all of that. It's very, very critical that we have the cooperation, the support of all of the members of our City Council, and our community, to have a successful visioning, to have a successful lead into the next operating budget, and into the CIP that will support the building programs that we hope we can complete in a timely way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Mr. Webb?
Thank you. With my two advisory groups, because of conflicts with meetings and things, I've not had the opportunity to go to the elementary PT, but I know their ice cream social is coming up soon, in the next couple of weeks, on the 17th of this month, so definitely encourage those families to go out and support that particular event coming up. And then, I'll just take the rest of my couple minutes here, just to kind of talk about something that, of last week's events in Baltimore, and just generally how that piece has within a personal family situation, has kind of affected me and my sister. Baltimore, the big piece of Baltimore is something that, of me working in higher education, and now with my new position in Maryland, seeing and going into a lot of the Baltimore city schools, it is a challenging situation that a lot of those students in those areas that were affected by the riots last week in Baltimore, education is a huge piece, and the opportunities for those students are sorely lacking, and it makes me, when I come back to Falls Church, be very thankful for what we do here in our community on a daily basis to educate all of our students and provide opportunities for them. In many ways, wish that there were ways that we could help in those, in urban cities such as Baltimore, do some things differently there that are lacking within their education system, but education is a big piece of it, that I think within that community, within the families in those communities, would be something I think would be strongly helping those communities to get to a much better place than where they are right now, of healing, and just the economic opportunities, the educational opportunities that are provided by having a good, solid foundation, would be a great thing for that to happen. But within my own family situation, you know, that my sister called me last week, and having a tough time making the decision of what to do with my niece last week, because my niece, during bath time, as mommy, went on with my daytime with her, and she asked her, my sister, her mom, she was like, "Well, mommy, is it okay that if I have white friends?" And I was kind of taken aback by that, as my sister, my sister, of course, tells her, "You can have whoever you want as a friend, doesn't make a difference who you want as a friend, you can have black friends, white friends, whoever." But then she, they made her ask the follow-up question of, "Well, why did you ask this question?" And my niece then tells her, "Well, when I was in class, we were doing a group project that the teacher asked us to divide up into groups, and she went to a group with her, some of her white friends, and one of the little girls in the group told her that she couldn't be in that group because she wasn't white." And that tells me, and my sister was struggling, "Do I say something to her teacher about that situation?" And I told her, "Absolutely, you should, because that type of behavior is something that is not necessarily that second first graders thing, it's something that she's learned at home, that if at minimal, that the teacher can build something into a teachable moment there, you know, at least give that teacher that opportunity to do that." And it's a sad time when you're still, kids are still learning that behavior at home, because ultimately, those kids, my niece, other students, they go into those situations as very innocent, not caring about black, white, or whatever, because my niece doesn't even necessarily refer to herself as "I'm black," she goes more of the Crayola Brown Box of saying, "Well, I'm brown," and she's, it's white, so that's how she refers to it, so she hasn't even gotten to that point yet, but having at that age, six years old, kind of having that opportunity introduced her already, it kind of makes me sad that we are at that point, that we still, race is still a big part of this country that we live in, and just, and having the opportunities to, for teachers, for, again, education is very important, where I made the point to say, "My sister, you need to at least have the conversation to give that teacher, if a situation occurs where she has that chance to do that, to talk with her class about those things." So, again, with all last week, that situation, you know, it, again, makes me feel good about what I do here in our community, to try to make sure that all of the students here in Falls Church get the best opportunities that they can, regardless of race, regardless of socioeconomic backgrounds that they're coming from, but they all get equal opportunities and access, and we all work really hard to do that, and that's something that I'm very proud of, that we do here in the city of Falls Church. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Webb. Ms. Carney?
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. I'm going to beg a little patience from my colleagues, I usually keep my comments pretty lean, but this evening, I am going to say a few more things than I usually might, just because I feel like I should. This is, I think, my 10th year on this school board, by the time I finish, and so it's my last opportunity to vote for a budget for the kids and the families and the members of our community, and I'm proud to do so, as I have always been with the budgets that we voted on. I wanted to start tonight, it may be coincidental, but I think interesting, that today is the birthday of Horace Mann. I don't know if you know who Horace Mann is, he's an educator from Massachusetts in the late 18th century, and a quote from Horace Mann says, "Education, then, beyond all other devices of human origin, is the great equalizer of the conditions of men, the balance wheel of the social machinery." Mr. Webb? And that summons, sums up why I ran for this school board 10 years ago, and why I've continued to serve, because I have an unfeeling belief in education as a great equalizer for every child in this city, in this state, and in the nation, and I think it's one of the most important things that we do. And that's what this school board tries to achieve through the budget that we work on each and every year, is make sure that every child has an opportunity to be educated in our town, and I think we do a pretty darn good job of it. With regard to this year's budget specifically, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, but I just have to say these things one last time. And that is, the budget this year will use about the same percentage of the city's revenues as it has for the past 10 years, 46%, 47%. The cost per student is almost completely flat over the past 10 years, at about $14-ish thousand dollars per child. On an inflation-adjusted basis, it has declined by 15-ish percent. Recently passed budgets in Arlington County, a portion 46% of their revenues to schools, about the same as our 46%, 47%, several thousand more dollars per student. The budget in Fairfax County, which was recently passed, and where the superintendent today let her unhappiness with it be known, is 51% of the Fairfax County budget, more as a percentage than in Falls Church, a couple thousand dollars less than we spend per student here in the city of Falls Church. However, if you read the press and talk to folks in Fairfax County schools, that's on the back of teachers whose salaries are even lower than ours, and classrooms whose sizes are much larger than is, should be permissible in Northern Virginia. So, they've chosen their path there. I say all this to tell folks in the city, I know in certain quarters this year, it's been quite fashionable to talk about how the schools are vacuuming up too much of the money in the city, and we can't afford it, and who are all those kids anyway, and where do they come from, and why do we let them come to our city? We're a small city, we are a 10th the size of Arlington County, and we spend about the same as Arlington County on our schools, and about the same as we've spent each and every year for the past 10 years as a piece of the city's revenue. So, while you may not think we spend the money in the right way, I think to say that the schools are eating up too much of the budget of the city is just wrong, if you look at the data and the numbers. Now, I will say that, as a community, and as a region, in fact, here in Northern Virginia, city residents, county residents contribute far more to the education budget than they do most places in our state, and that's because of the local composite index, where most folks in Northern Virginia, including the city of Falls Church, are deemed by the state government to have far more ability to pay for schools than many other counties and localities in the state. And so, if you're concerned about how much you pay for our schools, I would encourage you to reach out to the General Assembly, and ask them to please take a look at the local composite index, and make it fair. The state of Virginia's Commitment to Education, K-12, is to provide 45% of funding for K-12 education. That's across the state, that's not for each jurisdiction. In this jurisdiction, we get about 12 or 13, in other jurisdictions, far more. So, I would encourage you, I would champion you, talking to the General Assembly, about making this formula more fair, so that we don't have to carry as much of the freight here in Falls Church. Of course, I'd also say there are many places in our state that don't have any of the resources we do, and, but that's another topic. On the topic of teacher pay, there's been a good bit about that during this cycle. I've heard a couple of things that frankly disturb me. One is, "Well, gosh, that many people haven't left to go to Arlington, so why are you doing anything about this?" I would say in the last several years, we have had a number of teachers leave us, administrators, counselors, and a principal, to go to Arlington County for far higher pay. And I would ask those who don't like our documentation, and maybe you'd like more, how many people do we have to lose to make it worth our while? How many? It's been far too many so far, and this is based on my experience on this board, and in this community, and as a parent of children who went through our schools, where I watched over the years, great teachers leave to go to Arlington County. The school board this year has put in place the second year of a four-year program, one, two, three, four-year program, to get our teacher pay not equitable with Arlington County, but within about 5%. I think it's one of the most important policy decisions this board has made in a number I think it's one of the most important policy decisions this board has made in a number of years. I'm completely committed to it. And once again, I would ask people who don't think that that's necessary, how many of you would wait four years to get a raise, to be within 5% of someone who works one mile away at the same job that you do? How many? I think probably not most of us. Now, the reason that we have said within 3% to 5% is because we know there are intangibles that make this a great school district for teachers. We recognize that. But they don't allow for you to pay tens of thousands of dollars less to teachers. I'm going to move through all this. This is my last chance to say some things I wanted to say for years.
No worries.
With regard to the fund balance, there are folks in town who trot this out every year during budget season, although they have spent dozens of hours with us, and they understand it. It's a complex topic. We have tried for years to simplify it, and simplify it, and simplify it, to make it easy for folks to understand. It took me a few years to figure it out myself. Our fund balance operates within the charter of the city, which means any money we have left at the end of the year must be rolled over in a subsequent year to fund a subsequent year budget. I won't take you through all the complexity, but I will make an offer to anybody in this town. If you'd like to understand it, reach out to me, and I will meet with you one-on-one in helping you understand the fund balance and how it works. And it is published, by the way, so people know all the time what it is. Just a few little details. One, our finances are audited every single year by an external auditor, so that we know that they are correct. Our superintendent, Dr. Jones, has only two assistant superintendents, each of them carrying two full workloads. We have Lisa Hi, who's in charge of curriculum and human resources, and we have Hunter Kimball, who's in charge of finance and administration of facilities. We don't think we're top-heavy, as compared with our colleagues in other jurisdictions. This school board does get monthly financial reports on all of our budgets, so we track every single month, and in between, if we'd like to, what the expenditures are as compared to what they're expected to be. So, I feel like we have a very, very good insight. We have, over the years I've been on this board, you know, fine-tuned and ratcheted up those reports, so that we have a very clear picture of what's going on with school finances. So, going to the middle years program, asking the cost of the middle years program is like asking what's the cost of running Mary Ellen Henderson School. A number of years ago, this board made a decision that our schools would be IB schools from pre-K through 12. The International Baccalaureate is not a program like Gifted and Talented, it is the way we operate our school division. It is the founding structure for what is taught to children from pre-K through 12. Every teacher who works for us is in the IB program. Every para is in the IB program, every counselor, every librarian, everything we do in this school division is IB. And so, to ask us to identify, other than to say, everything we do here is about International Baccalaureate, because we believe for our children, it's a framework for learning and transitioning that will make them competitive in the centuries they need to be in competitive around the world, in terms of thinking critically, solving problems, being creative, working in teams, and collaborating. The last thing I'll say, and this is the last thing, and then I will be done for tonight, is I do want to thank my colleagues in the school board for another grueling budget season. You make it, as pleasant as it might be, every year to go through this, because of your dedication and hard work, and because of the intelligence and the caring that you bring to the process. I'd like to recognize our leadership, Justin Castillo and John Lawrence, who put in four to five times the hours that the rest of us do, to make sure that things go smoothly. And I think for rookie chairman, you did a great job, Justin, congratulations to you. I'd like to thank Dr. Jones and her leadership team, because you spend so much time, and it's just amazing to me that you do your day jobs at the same time as you do those jobs. I'd like to thank city council for working closely with us, and also the planning commission in terms of our CIP. In terms of council, I'd like to make a special thanks to Phil Duncan. Phil Duncan, for the last couple of years, has chaired City Council's Budget and Financial Operations Subcommittee, and has spent countless hours trying to figure out how to make the finances in our city work better, and trying to work with our school board on that topic. And I'd also like to thank and recognize Mary Beth Conley for stepping up as the chairman of that with Phil's departure, and I look forward to working with you to look at the budget process that we have in place in our town, and improve it from the citizen's perspective, as well as from the city council and school board's perspective. And that's it. Thank you very much for your patience.
And here I was worried about what we were going to do with all this extra time. All right, I'll make this brief. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for their participation in the budget process. I appreciate your hard work. I won't go down the list, that's been done. A couple of issues, the pay gap. I want to make it clear, this is a school board priority. This is not something that's been foisted on us by Dr. Jones. This is something that we have looked at and that we own. As Ms. Carney pointed out, we are halfway through the process. If there is a gap, and if you don't believe there's a gap, look at the chart showing the pay scales for Arlington and Falls Church, and I think you'll see that, yes, indeed, there is a gap. We've made progress in closing that gap. We are not finished, nor will we be trying to outbid Arlington. As has been said, we're trying to be in the ballpark. I will also say, it is much easier to stay ahead of the curve than it is to play catch-up. There are neighboring jurisdictions that have dug themselves a pretty deep hole and are struggling to find ways to get out. We don't want to exercise stewardship of this system in that way, and that's why we're working diligently and proactively on this. Teachers have told me they could go to Arlington for $13,000 more right now, and these are life-changingly good teachers that my kids and many other kids have benefited from. We don't want to lose that, nor do I want to engage in an ongoing experiment to see how many teachers we can lose if we do not close this gap. So, as a policy matter, we have decided to not do an experiment to close this gap to within a reasonable margin, and to do it within the timeframe of four years. So, again, if you have any doubts, look at the chart comparing the pay scales. Yes, Fairfax does not pay as much as Falls Church, but if you look at the markets and where people go and where they can work, Arlington is in the same marketplace as we are. We've heard from various teachers that. The other problem, is there a problem, there is a shadow issue of recruitment. We don't know who we're not getting. You don't see that. We do know that we have had trouble filling positions recently, and that is a result of Arlington getting a better offer to these people and getting them instead of us. With respect to the budget, it has been difficult. I think unfortunately, the, many of the issues that people are confronting stem from the fact that Falls Church is changing. I like to point out, we were at 2,400 students in 1965, we were under 1,000 in the late '90s, and now we're back up. We are now experiencing the fact that we are an extremely well-situated city in the region, and it's only getting more so. We're attractive, and we're attracting people, as are our neighboring jurisdictions. It is interesting to note that our enrollment rise for this year right now is standing at about 2.8%, according to Dr. Jones, not 1%.
If we were at today.
As of today. We are seeing strong enrollment trends, and I think, given the trends that we're seeing for kindergarten, pre-enrollment, this is going to be an issue that we're going to continue to have to live with. I would also remind everybody that the school board's job here, under the Virginia Constitution, is to provide for a free, high-quality education for all school-aged kids. That is our job, that is our charge, and that is what we do. This is our mission, and we will answer to the Virginia Department of Education, and to the voters, and to the kids, but you need to understand, we need to do what we think is in the best interest of the children of Falls Church, as those duties are defined to us by the Virginia Constitution. I would also emphasize the foundational aspect of education. Mr. Webb has talked about that. You know, education is front-loaded. You start young, and your education begins when you're young, and hopefully it doesn't end. There are many things that happen later in life, but without, you know, the end depends on the beginning. If you don't have a good education, you will pay the price down the road, or you will spend an inordinate amount of time and energy trying to play catch-up. So, with that, I will say it is 7:31. We're now a minute late, two minutes late to our meeting downstairs, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.